Uh, good evening. It's five thirty-two Thursday, May fifteenth. Uh, welcome to our. Uh, SAU, uh, so many people that are board and also our teachers that are here tonight and principal like lighter. Uh, we open tonight with a public hearing and for that we will go to Ms. Amy Facey.
Yes, thank you. So, um, you have a memo in your packet describing, um, a request to expend funds. From the Montverne School District Property Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund. So if you recall, there was a previous public hearing for tree work for ten thousand dollars, um. And then upon further review with our facilities director, um, he expressed, uh, concern that. The current fire alarm system, um, needs to be, uh, replaced. So. Um, the memo describes some of the, the reasonings why. It's basically, there's a possibility that an attempt to download program, troubleshoot or repair the system. Could possibly result in a, a system failure, um, which would be, uh, a, a, a serious issue. So. In order to mitigate that, we are, um, looking to move this project that was previously. Uh, scheduled to be completed in FY twenty-nine, removing that, uh, to. This fiscal year, next fiscal year, um, to complete, um, this project. So in doing so, uh, Roger Preston Director of Facilities has, uh, added this to. The five-year facilities plan. We still are fine in terms of, uh, keeping a balance of at least a hundred thousand dollars. For unanticipated emergencies. Um, so there would be the two projects that would be, um, completed. Uh, in the next few months. So this public hearing is to, um, listen to the public and then request. That the board approved the expenditure of up to seventy thousand dollars for. The fire alarm system us upgrade project. Uh, Roger feels comfortable that that seventy thousand dollars will. Uh, be sufficient. He's gotten three quotes. The one, the vendor that he's looking to go with, they quoted about sixty-four thousand. So just in case we want to have a little bit of a buffer. But we would only spend, um, what we need and those funds just wouldn't be, uh, um, withdrawn from the trust fund.
Any questions from?
Wasn't this board members?
Was this on the plan for significant more than seventy thousand dollars? It was like a hundred, right?
Um, if it was, he's gone out and done some additional pricing.
Which is good. I just remember seeing.
Yeah, you might have. Typically Roger will, um. Want to have a higher number and then be able to, to come in lower. He likes to, uh, under promise and over deliver his costing.
And then there was one other concern I had. Um, we're, we're going to be talking about a potential expansion of the school later, right? Part of the agenda. Um, the, the fire line system is a big thing. It was a big part of the expansion. Because we need to be upgraded in order to do an expansion. So the question is, did Roger cost us out? Or a system that could also work if we expanded the. Cool in the next couple of years. I'm sure he's been intimately involved and he would not, um, admit us to a project that cannot expand with the needs of the school. So he's intimately involved. So I'm sure.
Well, then I applaud his work for getting the price.
There's something we look the, uh, fire department on at all or not. Is it something that's strictly a facility?
Um, I'm, I know he works with the, the fire departments and both in Montverne and as well as in first, um, on a regular basis.
It's gonna be done. It's gonna be done.
Yep.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got some quick questions. My exposure with Raj has been, obviously, I've been with him for a couple of months. He's obviously very thorough, but we had any specialists come on actually evaluate this system and see if there's any other method or is this, this?
Yes. Okay. So when Harriman came out, they recommended we replace it. Okay. Appreciate that. Right as much.
Yes.
You know, it's part of their comprehensive needs analysis.
So at this point, I'll take a motion.
You'll close the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing. Seeing none, anybody online? Mr. Chamberlain?
We have one person on lock. But no hand up. I don't know. Eileen would like to make any comment on the public hearing?
Saying none, I will, uh, take a motion to close the public hearing.
I will someone.
Second, second, all those in favor? Thank you, Amy.
And that now you were.
So at this point, we'll open the Mount Vernon School Board meeting at five thirty-seven. And per RSA ninety-one dash eight tooth, section three. Do I need to read this?
No, lastly, we had someone on Zoom and you know.
Okay.
I'll put it, I'll put it in the Zoom chat.
So at this point, we need to approve. So I'll take a motion to approve the transfer of funds of up to. Seventy thousand dollars, uh, to replace the fire alarm system as needed. So move by Andrew, so by George, George, and second, second by Colin. All those in favor say aye or raise your hands. Plus, we're all here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I want to take, is that a couple of days or is that like a week or?
I don't know the answer to that, but there's. Roger has a list of projects happening over the summer in our district. So, but we have to get this approved and on schedule.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next up is, uh, public comment and number one of two. Public comment procedure. If you wish to speak during the public comment sessions, in-person guests will be allowed to speak first. Once we go through all the in-person guests, we will open it up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, please do the following. Raise your virtual hand, enter your full name in your avatar profile. When speaking, turn your camera on and say your full name and your town of residence. And when these are complete, you'll also have three minutes to speak. At this point, do we have any comments or questions from our in-person attendees? And I know that we have one online. Do we have a hand? No, nothing. Okay. Thank you. Next up, um, item number four for tonight's meeting is the signing of the collective bargaining agreement. And for details on that, I will hand it over to Mr. Barry and or Mr. Chamberlain.
Sure. This is, um, the last step in a process that started October, maybe, uh, September, October. And, uh, I really, uh, I've negotiated a few contracts in my roles and I've always liked to end. With both parties coming together and together signing the collective bargain agreement. So, uh, we came, we ratified, the board ratified, um, the MVEA ratified. We presented to the community, the community then voted in support of it. And then what we do is we take the changes that were, uh, voted on both cost as well as through any language and integrate them and update the contract. All that is done very collaboratively. I think you would admit that, right? We did that together.
Absolutely.
Uh, and Liz joined us for a little bit, which was fun. And so we now have an updated, cleaner copy of the MVA agreement. And I just, uh, uh, I, as Pete and I were talking before the meeting, it really is a, a, a great accomplishment when people can come together. And improve the working conditions and, and attract or retain people and also improve the educational opportunities and resources for kids. So. I really, I, I, I just appreciate both parties. Um, and so there's two, the way it happens, there's two coffees. We'll pass them around with pens, uh, all the boards here. That's wonderful. You would sign. And then, um, Maggie and Charlene will sign and they'll take both with them tomorrow. They'll get the entire or in the next couple of days, get the entire team to sign. Um, they keep one, we keep one, uh, in a fireproof safe that, it's that kind of stuff. And then we scan it and put it on the web. And then one actually goes by law. Um, we have to submit it to the New Hampshire Public Employees Labor Relation Board website. And then that is really the end of the process. Once it's submitted to the PLRB, but there is a law that after somebody will make it. Um, but it will be up on PLRB for everybody to see, but also be on our website, um, for people to see here. Cool beans. And if anybody wants to say anything, otherwise we can, I got some pens and some cups.
On behalf of our membership, uh, we just wanted to say thank you for the time that you put in because that, that was certainly very involved and.
Um, no, we're gaining them.
Yes, and our membership is, um, very happy to remain so collaborative with our board. And they're excited about keeping that wonderful relationship and everyone's really excited to be. To be here, continue to love.
Going to agree more. So thank you as well.
So if you guys want to come up and sign one, and then if you want to, um, there's a pen and pass it right down the line. If you guys want to sign this one, you guys can pick up that one at the end. We'll send this to them. Those should be, is there a pen? Yeah. You two ready to talk?
I'm pretty sure that's what's supposed to.
And then Pete and Bill follow up and Pete will grab that first one and it comes through. Nicole, that would be great. Here's another pen. We're going to travel. There's one to travel. One, one, the others.
My name is.
I apologize.
Still signing?
Um, no, we're going to update the page. Okay. So I'll bring, we'll update the page. We want to add you. Okay. That's already. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Uh, it's wrong. I apologize. I'm, we had a couple of eyes. On that head, that'd be great. If you can.
I can actually go fix it because.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. No, we're gonna.
Charlie, are you gonna print it and make the change?
Sorry.
No, it's perfect. This actually matters. We like this document. It's like a critical match, but.
I figure it's.
So no, you're doing great. And that's what happens in the, these, these are all on one page. So if we ever have a mistake, we can slide the other page in. But, uh, we'll keep going, looking right back. Thanks.
That's all right.
So next up, we have a presentation on literacy.
Yeah, Steve?
Yep. So, uh, folks, uh, before we begin, uh, uh, number of board members, the first time you're meeting. Our Director of Curriculum and Accountability, um, she started in the beginning of this year, uh, with us last year, uh, last July. Uh, her name is Elizabeth Cannon. Uh, prior to this role here, she was, uh, in the Hopkinton District as a reading specialist. And, uh, has come in and, and, uh, led us through the pilot, uh, of. Oh, well, K five, K six, um, exploration, finding, an anchoring resource. And, uh, also is taking on the responsibilities of the Director of Curriculum and Accountability, uh, for this, what we, we thought about. Because it's such a focus of what we do here, literacy is the number one objective on our framework. Um, I thought, uh, it would be worthwhile for you guys to see the work that happened this year and forecast out into. Next year and years beyond. Um, we're crazy, crazy excited about the work that was, has happened and, and Maggie's been a big part of that. And here, Tom's been here, the teachers here have been, you know, uh, pretty responsive to this work. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Liz and we'll get this.
You know. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to talk to you about what we've been working on this year and also kind of. Um, long-term where we're headed. So I'm talking about this as a comprehensive literacy plan because there's lots of pieces to literacy. How do I?
So.
No, no button.
So just, uh.
Spacebar?
No.
So when we talk about literacy, literacy is reading and writing, but it's also speaking, listening and language. So, um, students, as they come to us in kindergarten, those language skills become the building blocks that they learn to connect to symbols. And then to read and write with. So when we refer to that, we want to think whole picture about all of these skills. Um, what I'm going to show you is going to connect to the pillars, mostly, um, one and three, um, sometimes five as well. But just as a reminder that, you know, all the work that we're doing at the SAU is always kind of tied back to the framework. And, um, we'd end with that. So what you can see here is a representation of, um, reading and writing as two sides that are co-equal. So when we learn to read is one side of the coin, when we learn to write is the other side of the coin. On one side, we're decoding the symbols on the page. On the other side, we're encoding the symbols on the page. On one side, we're, we have to know what those symbols, sounds they even make. And on the other side, we have to know the sound and then how to make it. So understanding that these are two sides that both have to be addressed is really important. So we treat it holistically like that. And this is kind of, um, a main anchoring visual for us in the district. It's also well-known research. Um, it's Starburst Reading Rope. And what it does is talks about the two main areas that need to come together for skilled readers. So the first is language comprehension. And so this is made up of several different strands that you can see there. Um, background knowledge that kids have about a topic, uh, vocabulary, language structures, uh. Verbal reasoning and literacy knowledge. Literacy knowledge can be as little as when kids come in in kindergarten. You know, we want to know if they know to turn the pages the right way, to go left to right, from top to bottom. Um, and when you get into upper grades, it can be things about talking about different types of genres and how they're laid out and how to best understand them. And then on the bottom part there, you'll see word recognition. That's where we're actually lifting the words off the page. So those are your foundational skills. Of understanding sounds, how they connect to symbols and being able to do that with automaticity for, uh, sight word recognition. So then as those pieces all weave together, we get to this part here where the two ropes weave together even stronger and stronger. And that's where most kids are, um, at around grade three and up, you know, later elementary and into middle school. And they're just becoming, um, more automatic readers. Sometimes you might hear it talked about as in the younger grades, they're learning to read. As they get older, they're reading to learn. So those skills have to be automatic so that they can really focus in on the content of what they're reading. And as they start to do that in subject areas. So this is an anchor for us as a district when we talk about reading. And developing common understandings. So the mission for us is to develop proficient readers and writers. And we're going to do that through the use of evidence-based curriculum and instructional methods, um, using assessment. And having a multi-layered system of support. That multi-layered system of support is often referred to as MTSS. And that's something you're going to hear a lot about in the next year because we're really going to focus on tightening that up and having some through lines in the district. And the vision is to create an environment that fosters a love for literacy through direct instructions of the skills necessary. Um, to create successful readers and writers. And to create this, we'll focus on creating a literacy ecosystem, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about in a second. That will have clear through lines that connect the district kind of vertically, um, creates lasting sustainability for it. And increases student performance through that use of evidence-based practices. So this is something, um, when I talk about a literacy ecosystem, I like to use these graphics. You can see that in both pictures, they're really working hard. They're both growing, putting a lot of energy into it. But one side is going to get a lot of, a lot further than the other. So our goal in a literacy ecosystem is to get people, um, within buildings. Within the SAU growing in the same direction because we become more efficient and effective then. So this can be everything from language that we use. I give an example sometimes of when I was a reading specialist, I had a student. Who I was working with a phonetic phonics rule with. And it's when there's an E at the end of a word, it makes the other vowel say its name. And I was referring to it as a silent E. His teacher referred to it as a magic E. It was three weeks into instruction that I suddenly realized he thought those were two different things because we were using two different terms. So aligning our language and our instructional methods, um, throughout the district will help us be more efficient and effective. And that's that idea of that literacy ecosystem. So to create a literacy ecosystem, when we think about the, the big picture, we need systems and structures. Um, and that's things that falls on administration a lot, right? So those are things like schedules, using our personnel to the best of, um. You know, using their strengths, um, having screening and data collection meetings. Using diagnostic testing to really drill down and see what a kid might need extra help in. Using progress monitoring to make sure that they're making that progress. Providing the systems and the structures for teachers to do that is up to the SAU and administration to ensure we have that for them. And then as they have that, they're able to use instruction and curriculum to actually teach the kids. So that's the instructional routines. Um, the differen- differentiated instruction that occurs. Um, making sure that we're addressing the five essential components of reading, being systematic and explicit. Making sure that we're using evidence-based curriculum and practices and providing those interventions to kids that need them. And when we put that all together, that's how we create this tiered system that it will hopefully help meet the needs of all students. And so that we can make sure that all students are proficient readers and writers by the time they're leaving SAU thirty-nine. So this year, um, in the systems and structures kind of area, some of the things that we've focused on is, um. Creating systems that allow us to use our resources well. So an example of this, um, at MB, they use, uh, kind of. What I need, a wind block to, um, have kids receive the interventions that they need. Um, or you can flood the grade with any additional staff you've had at one time. Um, this is helpful because it assures that the kids aren't getting taken out of their core instruction, but it's also core instruction and more. Unified approach to the dyslexia screening law that we have in New Hampshire, uh, for K through three. Where we screen and make sure we, any students that have red flags that we're getting to them sooner rather than later to provide that intervention. Um, looking at our master schedules to provide areas of increased efficiency and using that progress monitoring data. And diagnostic screeners to really drill down to, um, there's kind of a hierarchy of skills in literacy. And when a student is struggling, you want to, we'll call it drill down to what that lowest skill level is. So you really can help them build that strong foundation. Um, additionally, we've talked a lot about assessments, um, what, what their purpose are, what we're doing with them. So we're working on, this is still part of our process, but building common understandings around the types of assessments we, we use and the purpose for them. So universal screeners are those three times a year screeners, which we're trying to find out are, are students at risk. It's kind of like, um, just running a net through the water and you want to catch any that might be at risk. Diagnostic assessment kind of follows that up. And it allows us to dig a little deeper with the student and find out what the student knows or what the student might still need to be taught. Cause this allows us to make kind of an intervention plan for them. Um, diagnostic assessment is also kind of a, a check in balance for the universal screeners. So you're. If a kid had a bad day and they didn't do well on the universal screener, but you take them for the diagnostic and you realize, oh, they do have those skills. So it's a check on that. Once we finish those diagnostic assessments, we have a plan then of what skills need to be addressed. And as that's being implemented, we progress monitor to make sure our instruction's working and seeing if we need to change course at all. And then outcome assessments are what you guys are probably most familiar with. These are used to kind of measure, like, did our instruction as a building work? Did our instruction as an SAU work? These are things like New Hampshire SAS, right? We, did the kids learn what we set out for them to learn? Um, so thinking about that, we've, um, I've worked really closely with Heather Jennings, our special education coordinator. And we've looked into our assessments, um, and what our needs are. And looked at moving from NIWA to STAR for third to tenth grade next year. Some of the rationale behind that is it's a more efficient test. Um, it can be given in twenty to thirty minutes. Uh, NIWA would take some kids multiple days sometimes. Um, and this is helpful for multiple reasons. One, you hate to see a kid struggle over a test for that long, um, and you kind of start to question the validity of the results. But also because we, we aren't going to move the needle by just testing, right? Testing and assessing is important, but we need to have that instructional time. So we want to be efficient with the assessment time so we can increase the instructional time. It has a progress monitoring tool that can be used, um, throughout, throughout the grade levels. Provides clear, easy to understand reports. They can be broken down by standards. So teachers can use them for differentiated instruction. Um, they can be used to guide instruction and, uh, some of our other comparable districts have also moved to STAR. Such as Bedford and Hanover. Um, I've used STAR in my previous district, so I've had experience with it and. It, it's a really easy to use and effective tool in, in grades three and up. Um, in grades K through two, it's a little different because we're really looking at those foundational skills. Um, and so we're looking at using what's called a CVM in grades K through two. And this is because we really want to make sure that we get accurate data. Um, if you've ever seen a kindergarten through second grader on a computer, you, or a touchscreen, you've probably seen them as kind of. You know, click around. Um, and so doing those kind of tests with them cannot, you know, can provide questionable data at times. So what happens in CBMs is you sit knee to knee with a kid, um, and you, and you do these measures. So you can assure that the results that you're getting are accurate. CBMs are also, um, have a very strong correlation with future standardized test scores and reading of reading achievement. And they're very highly sensitive to small amounts of change. Which when you think about all the growth that has to happen between K and two and foundational skills. It's important to be able to measure these very small movements because that's how, how we move the needle on that. So it's essential for those foundational skills. Um, and it's time efficient and will allow, it will serve as both that kind of screener. And then kids who do need intervention, it can also serve as their progress monitoring. Cause it's, it's so, um, sensitive to those small increments.
CVM.
Curriculum-based measure. Yeah. And so what it looks like, um, in literacy at those ages is like you might start out. They're usually one-minute time probes because you're wanting to see if they have their automaticity. And it would start out in kindergarten with like, how many letters can you name it? And then they were progressed to sounds, and then they were progressed to blending sounds to read, and then they would progress to whole words. And then they progressed to passages. So that's kind of like the, the system of them. What's that? I know. Steve, what's happening?
What?
Are you scared? I'm going to go backward.
Yeah. Oh, it works for backward, but not. Yep, yep. Thanks. Um, so the, the focus has been through some of the pilots and continued work we're doing. Has been on strengthening tier one instruction. Um, you can't intervene your way out of a tier one problem. I like to say. So having support systems is essential, but they'd be overwhelmed if there's too many kids that need those additional supports. So we want to make sure in our tier one. Uh, instruction in the classroom, we're meeting the needs of the majority of kids with aiming for that eighty percent meeting their needs in the classroom. Um, so some of the things we've done is the pilot, uh, K through six that we ran this year. Um, up at Salhegan, they have a ninth grade writing class. It's been really, um, setting kids up for success with some of those fundamentals. Of writing as you get to the high school age and the continued use of foundations to build foundational skills. Already talked a little bit about this, but the dys- dyslexia screening law, um, in K to three, we did some work to kind of unify our approach to that as a district. And we have a really large number, I think we have, is it everybody here? Yeah. So everybody at MB has participated in letters training. That's offered by the state. This is, um, fantastic training. It's really expensive in the state, offered it for free for teachers, parents, anybody who were, had relations with kids and wanted to be able to take it. And it's really, um, it's not a program, it's not a curriculum, but it's the why and understanding how the brain works and learns to read. So it really sets, um, the scene for teachers to have a real strong depth of knowledge about what they're teaching. And it's a, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a two-year program. You can make college credit for it. So it's really impressive that all the teachers. At MB have done it because it's a big commitment. So looking ahead, um, we're looking at implementing a knowledge building program and that was from the, uh, pilot this year. Pilot this year, so we're in the final processes of that and we'll be bringing that to the board soon for approval. We're also exploring increasingly efficient ways of providing intervention at each of the buildings. Each building has a little bit of a different setup and continuing to strengthen that tier one. Those new universal screening tools that I talked to you about, so. Those CBMs that I mentioned for K through two, they're also important to have access to grades three and up for students who are. Struggling and receiving intervention because they're still working on some of those foundational skills. So they're, they can be used to progress monitor those students as well. We're looking at a data management tool called branching minds. This is a tool where we can keep data for students and it will follow students throughout the district. So if there's a student in ninth grade at South Heagan and they've been in the district all along. They'll be able to call up that name and see what interventions they've had, um, what their history was. And it's, it's more than just data too, it can include attendance, um, we can put behavioral data on there, but it's kind of one. Location for all of that to be centralized, so we're going to start working with that next year and probably. The following year will fully roll it out to all staff, next year will be a core group that will be the MTSS task force. Which is the last bullet there, which I mentioned a little bit before, so that MTSS is that layered systems of support for students. Um, and so Heather and I will be. Leading this task force that's going to have six people from each of the buildings and district and we'll be working together. To use the data that we're collecting from these assessments to really drive instruction. And make database decisions throughout the district. So I think the next one is, um, Tom wrote a few slides here about. More specifically, how some of these things have been occurring here at MB, if you want to speak to that.
Sure, yeah, first of all, really excited about the work, um. I want to just say, you might remember, uh, if you've been following, we followed a similar process with math here. Where there was a, a high buy-in. On professional development around math, and then we brought in some resources that were. More current, more research-based to the, the, the new research and best practices and, um. And I would say the teachers here were super equipped for that, for that process. Similarly, I feel that we're in a very similar place now, right now, where as Liz mentioned and, and the bottom. Bullet there, uh, all of our educators are or have completed. The letters training, which is a very extensive training. But it's, there's been a lot of conversations amongst our staff. Uh, around the, the training and, and, um, and just the, the depth of it, so, um, it's really been exciting. This year, I, I really, I, I'm walking through rooms, talking to teachers. Again, really amazed at the, the work ethic of the group and that they, they see the urgency. They understand the, the, you know, the gaps that need to be filled and, um. And at the same time, I think, uh, one of the areas when we talk about MTSS, we talk about tiered supports. Right now, our threshold, I think I've said this before, but our threshold for students that we provide some level of support for. Is the sixtieth percentile, which is very unusual. But we feel that we, uh, especially in the early grades, we really need to create that urgency so that the gap doesn't widen over time. And, uh, if we see any flags. Especially in those early grades, we want to jump on that as quickly as we can, so. The processes around that are a bit complicated, but that in and of itself to me. Speaks to the urgency and the level of, of support, the teachers and the staff feel these, these students need to write literacy, so. Yeah, continue the pilot, so without reading to you. The writing and the composition instruction and, and the integration of that. Through the resources that we'll be bringing in will make that much easier. MTSS, we talked about, we've had a win time here for quite a while, that's a support lock, you're probably familiar with it. It's a, it's a catch-all, it's everything from reading to li- uh, literacy to math. To other areas of support that students receive. Really important that they're not pulled from tier one instruction, the core instruction. So we felt that's, that's an important piece of our schedule. Refining of data analysis, we are constantly talking about data at grade levels, uh, if not every week. It's a consistent cycle of conversation, uh, at our grade level meetings. And we talked about professional development, it is ongoing, it is not just letters, but other areas as well.
So that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have questions.
Nice report, thanks you for that update, and I guess I'd ask Tom and, and you, but. Do you get a sense from the students that there's buy-in to these programs and. More excitement into reading and stuff like that?
Yeah, so I, I, I am always hesitant to, to use the program. Language, because, um, while we do pilot. Resources and programs that have resources. What we really want to do is make as many connections to students and their learning as possible, when you're talking about literacy, the writing piece. The, the, the decoding piece, the phonics of the early grades and just how all of that pieces together with them. Learning to read, but then reading to learn in the upper grades, you really see that progression here in a K six school, our fourth, fifth and sixth graders are. Middle schoolers for all intents and purposes, and they are reading to learn, so. Bringing all of those pieces together and, and applying that. It is super exciting for kids, and when we have things like writing festival coming up, when we have things like the celebration of literacy or. Read across America, that's when we really see everything's coming to fruition. I love this time of year because this is when we get to celebrate things like literacy, things like math and. And, uh, we're going to have the expo here in a few weeks, the, uh, the writing festival, kids are into it, they're very excited, we'll have a huge turnout that night. So yeah, I think there is, I think, um. It's a lot of confidence building and it's the same thing on the math side. When students aren't confident and they, they feel that they're maybe behind their peers or that they're just not where. Other students are or where they should be, um, that can create some tension points. So it's really about building that confidence and reassurance and, and closing those gaps as quickly as possible.
And I think the thing about what we've been working on this year, um, that's kind of new, it's like we always knew kids needed support in decoding to read, obviously. But what we've realized with research is that. Their background knowledge and vocabulary has a significant impact as well, so. One of the nice and fun things about some of these resources that we've been piloting this year. Is that they are based on these knowledge building units, so for example, um, I think it's second grade that has a Greek mythology, yeah. And I remember I've talked to teachers in the past and they said, second graders aren't going to want, like, that's way too hard for second graders, no, they love it. They're on the playground, they're pretending that they're different gods, like they're, you know, you can see it come through in ways, so I think. There was a period of time in education where we were like, we got to focus on reading and math, which we do. But what happened is we dropped some of that content and we actually kind of shot ourselves in a foot a little bit by that, so bringing back some of that content. You know, along with the social studies and science content that they're already doing. I, I, I think that really motivates a lot of students.
Yeah, and the feedback in terms of the program, the pilot, uh, has been high engagement, high interest.
Yeah.
The, the topics, the, the, um, the books they're reading are very high interest for the most part, not, not across.
Right, right. And, you know, there's access points for all kids, so even if you're a student who's struggling with decoding. You can still access the conversation about this piece of art because we've all looked at it together and we're all going to have a conversation. Which builds language skills then, so.
I think one of the other important pieces is that we are all reading teachers here, we're all literacy teachers. Even though we have blocks for literacy, it's really making those interconnections, even in math, the vocabulary is very important, so. The more connections we can make and build on experiences.
Well, thank you guys and all. Liz, nice to see you, thanks for coming up.
Thanks.
And thank you for all the work.
Thanks.
Next up, item number six is our consent agenda, three items. Draft minutes from our March twenty-fifth board meeting, draft minute for our April tenth board meeting. And also, uh, some unanticipated revenue from the ETA of two hundred and thirty-five dollars. I don't know whether Amy want to touch on that or on. So basically, uh, we do need a motion to accept and, and expand the two hundred and thirty-five dollar donation. We'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Yeah, a second. All those in favor? Passes five, nothing, thank you. Next up is our facilities report. Um, any questions or comments, um, the board or from our. From Tom or. Anybody else? SAU side?
I do have a question, so, um, I know we're still doing, uh, daily water meter readings, so are we still having? Water issues right now, or is that something?
Hopefully not after the last week.
I think he was just doing it so that we had long-term data to be able to know and advise us when we need to replace the whole system. Once you're doing something like that, you don't really.
Proactive.
Right. Cause we haven't replaced it yet. We replaced a lot of pieces of it. Because that isn't typical, typically you don't do daily. Read, so unless you're having long-term issues.
Yeah, I think just based on history would be my guess, but I can check with Roger.
You could probably step down. You would think, yeah.
I'll ask him and, and I'll send you a email.
Any other questions about the facilities report or the two treasurers reports?
Nope.
Good, we need to accept. Next up is item number eight, is a co-curricular request for talent show.
Yeah, so. Later, please. Sure, thank you, uh, so this came in a little later, uh, may not have been the original. But I had a request come forward for our tradition, which is talent show. Shaquay and Sherry, uh, two of our teachers are co-advisors for this, have done this for the last few years. Again, it's a tradition and, uh, it is typically they meet five or six times and then we have a talent show, so.
I wholeheartedly support.
I agree, I didn't see, is there any cost involved?
No, it's nothing, the board has to do an act.
I'll do a do it with my boy. Andrew and Andrew.
Yeah, it's popular, it's fun.
Yeah, just a motion to accept the, uh, annual talent show.
Make a motion. I'm a second.
All those in favor? This is five, nothing. Thank you. I think your first meeting was today, wasn't it, Tom? I read the calendar, right?
Yeah, they, uh, they preliminarily, preliminarily, uh, gathered and organized and, um. So yeah, they've been putting that out there and building interest and. Yeah, cool, yeah, that'll be fun. We'll, we'll get a note out.
It's just at lunch, right? Was that, it was at lunch, right, not at school?
The meeting today was at lunch, yeah, but they'll do, they'll do after-school meetings. This one was just a preliminary organized, see what the ads, there'll be more.
Next up is, uh.
Yeah.
Our principals report for Mr. Whitaker.
Okay, so Mike asked me to talk for a couple hours tonight, wrap up the year, I'm going to hit a lot of notes. Um, I'll keep it succinct, um, I like to organize this around our, our priorities and goals. Literacy, math and climate and culture, I'll start with literacy, we already talked about it tonight, uh, we did do. Quite a celebration over the last four to six weeks on literacy from Read Across Mount Vernon, which you know is a tradition, guest readers. This year we added a new flair to it with our new librarian, uh, she coordinated with South Heagan High School, we had high school readers coming one, one morning. Went very well, the high school kids were very excited, our students look up to those kids. It's just another way to celebrate and just bring, bring that out, the excitement of reading, and so that was. That was a good new ad to Read Across MB. We've talked about the resources, again, hats off to our staff and, uh, the reps, Sherry Hall, Suzanne Mazak. Amy La Boy and Maggie, uh, are the reps on that work, uh, for, for our staff on the theater committee, so, um, it's gone really well. We had a couple of author visits, that was another nice coordination, uh, across the SAU. Author came in, South Heagan High School, we bused the upper students down there. Met up with the upper students from Wilkins and the middle school, so, uh, it was a fun day, uh, really. Cool presentation from this adolescent, uh, literature, author. And, uh, just again, brought more exciting, excitement around, around literacy. I mentioned our writing festivals coming up, uh, that is a showcase, so some of the portfolios writing students have done over the year, so it's been enough in a couple of weeks. Jump to math real quick. Charlene's here, but, um, one of the things that has brought a lot of excitement around math this year is our weekly challenges. They have been more successful than we ever dreamed of, uh, we have kids running into school on Monday, literally. Running down the hall to Charlene's office to turn in their, their, uh, their challenges, so. Charlene, as you probably know, she goes into, pushes into classrooms, does a lot of enrichment work with students, uh, as, as all students, uh, as a whole. And, uh, one of the pieces to that is these challenges that have been very, very successful this year. We also have our math carnival, it's a celebration of math coming up, uh, this is a bi-annual event. Charlene and Sarah Millis, uh, are the advisors and they, um. They have, what, sixty?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one students, uh, in the upper grades, high interest, um, if you've never been to math carnival. You gotta see it, no picture or, or article will capture it, but, uh, it's a really fun night. And then, what is that?
From five to seven.
I will be there, I will be.
And, uh, we, we partnered with the, uh, historical society with Anna Song. You know, Anna, she runs the museum, the historical museum in, um, Town Hall, the, the museum there. And our third grader, third graders visited the museum and then the cemetery, um, it was a great day. We've been planning this for a while, Anna came in, she had done a presentation earlier in the year, and this was sort of the culmination. So that was something new that we had not done before, the museum I hear is moving to another location, so this was the last big visit and, um. Actually, we're putting a plug in, it's going to be around this weekend, your spring gala, um, and then spring gala is this weekend, we have our float, our nineties float. From our, for our sixth graders, we have lip sync coming, uh, a lot of excitement around this weekend, so. I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping, as long as I'm not passing out numbers, I'll, I'll. We have a lot of kids in the kid run, too, yeah, they very.
Questions or comments for Mr. Whitaker? Thank you, and also thank you for the weekly updates, well done and, and very comprehensive, so it's good, good work, thank you, thank you. Next up is a facility update, and I think we're going to go to Mr. Chamberlain for that, for Mr. Barry.
Just, uh, two, two things, just, we did have a meeting, Harriman came and met with the faculty today to present different options and get feedback. The faculty provided good feedback about things to think about as this process moves forward. On Monday, uh, we are, uh, making a very similar presentation about the contrast between. The program at Amherst Middle in Monverne for seventh eighth grade and with a specific charge, uh, push. Promotion, everything we can do to get kindergarten, first grade, second grade parents to come. We've done some events, but as you know, we're not getting really the, the targeted population that, it's second, you know, a. A second grader in five years would be in seventh grade, and that really is about the timeframe, right? When the, when the five-year extension on the tuition program, so that five, six, seven years for kindergarten, one, two. So, and, and immediately following that, Mike has been working with Katie. So and, and immediately following that, Mike has been working with Katie, our communications director, develop a survey. So we're trying to get feedback from those who are most directly impacted by this. So on Monday, you're welcome to come, it'll be in, at the NPR room, but in the small upfront, it's gonna be intimate setting if it's possible in the NPR room. We're not doing the stage and the big thing, and I'll be going through summer visions. And you saw in board notes, right, about the, the transportation was allocated, the, the new CPA was allocated, so all that stuff. I'm gonna do some updates, but that's six o'clock on Monday here at MBDS and a multipurpose room with. Doing everything, we, I know how busy it is, we're trying to get everything we can to get some people here in that target population. You women, does that make sense?
We definitely post on Facebook, I know there's a, there's a kindergarten group.
We have, okay, this event, the email, but I just. I understand you did go to social media.
We're working on that, dude. I'll tell you, we're working on that, I can tell you offline how we're working on that.
Yeah, we're, so I just, just make sure we get this much.
Yeah, we're trying, thank you, Connor, appreciate it.
Are we hearing any interest from the community at all or?
A little bit, a little bit of traction, a little bit of RSVP. We're gonna throw this out there, we're gonna throw the survey out there, and I hope we get some responses and that will help plan next steps, you know? As we've synthesized all the information, I appreciate the work that everyone's gone into it.
I'll plug it again on Friday in the newsletter.
Thank you, appreciate that, and the other part is, we'd like to talk with the word recommended to the board is, is we're trying to unify some facility work throughout the SAU. And we've asked Southvegan High School to establish a building grounds committee, Amherst has a building grounds committee. And we'd like to establish a building grounds committee for, for the Mount Vernon Village School District. It's, it would, it would definitely, the charge is there, it's about any renovation, expansion, maintenance, but it's also. And, you know, whatever we do, so it's the maintenance of the building as well as renovation, the two board members, three community members, meeting monthly. We think that's a more workable group, long term, to take, you know, this through, review all the maintenance stuff and prioritize and help. And then Mike's working on, was charged at the SAU meeting, is, is to create a venue or a process. Where representatives from all the building and grounds and people can meet and discuss, make sure, because what Amherst is doing, as we've talked about this, impacts MB. What MB's doing impacts Amherst, both of those are significant, and obviously whatever's going on, Southvegan High School impacts everywhere. So we really want some collaboration and some connections about, make sure all the districts understand what everybody's doing regarding facilities. Cause ultimately, it's a shared tax impact, right, the Mount Vernon plus Sohegan, Amherst plus Sohegan. And trying to get some collaboration going, so we would love a vote by the board to establish the Mount Vernon Building and Grounds Committee. With two board members, three community members, and charging the SAU office to make a solicitation requesting. People to join this work, the lift we're looking at, we envision. Five to five thirty on day before, on the day of our meetings, you know, just that, and then the big one, a half hour before the SAU board meeting for all representatives. So we had pretty good luck, Andrew, remember, we met before board meetings, so this would be like a half hour, forty five minutes regularly. And we think we need a mechanism to engage the community and board every monthly to review this facility.
So what we didn't have good luck with is getting lots of community members to show up that early. Cause it's really difficult to get out of work and to get somewhere by five o'clock.
So, you know, we could put that in the. Like a, like Google form, what's the best time, would you do it for a meet?
Yeah, basically, don't, we shouldn't broadcast that it's definitely five.
Yeah.
Basically, ask the group when they wanna meet. As, as inconvenient as it was for, for you all, it's, you know, it drove down participation, so. At the SCU level, like it's just board members meeting as a larger group, or is it also?
And I think the community members. Building grounds would like recommend their.
Yeah, so. What Stephen's opposite likely is, completely fleshed it out exactly. You know, we're gonna definitely have a board member from each building and grounds, and we'd like to have a community member. There's, you know, maybe six people, you know, representing the three groups, two from each, and then, you know, myself, Roger, Amy. And then we, that's the mechanism that unites the group, and then we'll report out at the SAU meeting. But I'm gonna work on that over the next two weeks prior to the twenty ninth of May. But trying to find a way to efficiently get each building and grounds. Group from each district to, to know what the other ones are talking about, and the board members to see a report that they can read. So they have a, a vision of what's happening in MB, what's happening in Amherst, and what's happening at Sohegan, so we can have, you know, fruitful conversations about that work.
We think of the standing committee, five, two board, three community members, and Andrew, I agree, will figure out the best time to meet. But that committee, we think, would be of value to the community and of value to the board. And align, make some, one thing that Mike's really trying to do is, is trying to make consistent and systematized between the districts. And having the three building grounds representatives meeting, we think we can be more efficient and collaborative for the SAU. So if, if the board has such a desire to make a charge, to form a charge, the SAU to solicit community membership. That would be great, you certainly don't have to elect two board members to serve now, because we won't be having it up and running, but if you'd like to, we can do that, too.
I have a motion to establish the building committee from Alberta. Okay, motion from Colin, second, by Mr. Torres, all those in favor? Pass slide method.
And we'll see if we can connect with some community members.
Yeah, we'll get that posted.
Thank you, appreciate it very much, I think it's gonna be a good thing.
Can you just insert? On the, on the description, just possible expansion?
Yes.
Or potential expansion?
You get a ding ding.
I don't want the perception to be that that's form of charge ahead.
Yeah, mercy of course.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you. Uh, next up, item number eleven, I believe, on our agenda for tonight is the end of year financial projections and potential projects.
Yes.
And for that, we go to Miss Facey.
Yeah, so Steve, you could click on.
Which one?
The projections first.
This one.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So this is, yeah, go all the way up, so this is the time of year when we are. Attempting to move towards closing our books and are hounding folks to close POs and cumber. Funds needed that haven't already been encumbered, releasing conferences so that we get a better financial picture of where we're gonna end up for the year. So we take a look at both revenue and expenditures. So for revenues, we are projecting some additional funds over what was budgeted. Primarily due to some increases in tuition from parents, as well as some increases in interest income. Not a ton, but it's, it's helpful. For state revenue, there was a phase out grant that Mount Vernon received. And we also, also are collecting a bit more in special education aid than what was originally projected. So that's good news as well. For federal Medicaid, that has been a challenge this year, we moved to a different system. There's also some turnover at the state who are looking at claims differently. So, um, we're right now, I just have what we've actually received, which is much smaller than what was projected. I'm hopeful that this number will look better. Before the end of the year, we'll keep the books open for a bit, because these claims would be for Medicaid reimbursements for students. Who are in, for this current year, so we'll keep the books open a little bit. Because if we receive those reimbursements, we can apply them to this year. But all in all, we're projecting additional. Revenue funds for FY twenty twenty five. On the expenditure side, we also are in, looking to be in a good position, we have some savings. In tuition, some savings in salary and the associated benefits. Some health insurance elections that went our way, and some folks who should be participating in four or three B who are not. So that is a benefit to the district, we always do encourage all employees to participate. For extracurricular, we have some co-curricular stipend savings. For student support services, there's a small amount projected for some out of district assessments that were not needed. We have some professional development savings for staff who have not taken advantage of that, we have some salary savings for the new library. Cause that was a change that happened after budget. The contingency warrant article, so if you recall, that was passed last year. For thirty thousand dollars to be used if we had some potential additional expenses. Happy to report that all of those funds are available, there's a, a small amount, we're gonna do a budget transfer. So that we make sure we have that thirty thousand, but that will be going back to offset taxes, so there's no need for us to. To use those funds. A small deficit in printing, we're gonna have to do a budget transfer there, you'll see that next month. And then a pretty significant amount of savings in the transportation line, primarily due to special ed transportation. That we have not needed to use what was budgeted. So all in all, the total unsigned fund balance between both. Additional revenues as well as expenditure savings is, and this is still early, you're gonna get an update next month. Is two hundred and forty five thousand five hundred dollars. The warrant articles that were passed by the voters totaled a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we're able to fund all those, which is great, we projected a ninety thousand dollar offset to the tax effort. We're able to meet that obligation as well, that's two hundred thousand dollars, so right now, we're projecting forty five thousand five hundred dollars left. That is available, should the board want to fund end of year projects, and I'll go over some of those next. Or the board can vote on not to do those projects and send those funds back to further offset the tax effort. Hugh, Steve's.
Just a reminder, if you send that back to the tax rate. Your basis next year is a hundred and thirty five thousand five hundred dollars. So unless you commit to a hundred and thirty five thousand five hundred dollars, you'll be, you'll be starting with a tax rate increase. Because it starts, it's a delta, it's so, whatever you do this year, that's the base. You go more, that's great, but if you go less, that means you're starting to, you already have an impact of the tax rate before you've started the budget. So like, once some years, you have to, what we call eat or swallow. And reduce the fund balance from like two hundred to one hundred, that's like raising taxes by a hundred thousand dollars. So, we like to, if, if possible, and always meet our estimate. So you told the taxpayers, when you stood up at delivery, that the tax rate would be ninety thousand dollars back to you. We did that, met our obligation. We also said, and they voted for this, they said, they voted for a hundred and ten thousand dollars to go into those warrant articles, those were all passed. So it's the board's discretion now what to do with the forty five thousand five hundred. And we also, and this came up, we have returned all of the contingency that we didn't use. Okay, so just so you know, so it's up to you, we can, while looking at the projects and see what we recommend that you do, if you did, you would distribute this forty five.
And yeah, just a reminder, next month, I guarantee you, these numbers will change. Some of the projections will get closer to knowing where we are. But we wanna give you a heads up on the projections this month, and then the potential projects. And we'll bring updated projections for next month, and these projects forward. And the board will be asked to make a decision next month, so no decisions being requested this month.
Let's think about it.
So what we've done is talked to facilities, talked to technology, talked to, to Tom. To get some projects that those folks would see, would say are beneficial to. The district, and we take those and we've developed a system of rating them based on a level. So safety and efficiency, facility, educational priorities, and climate. So the projects that you have here are. A playground. Project, which is replacement of the treads, stairs from the main building to the outdoor basketball court. And to replace the hard surface of the gazebo. And that's estimated at thirty thousand dollars for those projects. The second project is to replace the epoxy flooring in two of the bathrooms. These are the most high traffic area outside of the library, right out here, and the epoxy has failed during this full year. So those, we see both of those as safety and efficiency level one. For the next projects, there's a projector replacement in the NPR, so it's working right now. But looking to potentially upgrade the machine, and that's estimated right now at twelve thousand four sixty two. And then the second item is a new speaker replacement in the NPR, and this was in response to the board's request. To look to improve the sound quality in the NPR, and there's, there's quotes in there. And I will work with, with Brian to, to see if I can get some additional quotes. And some clarification on the second one for you.
Now, the quote for the projector isn't clickable, even though it looks clickable?
Oh, it isn't?
No, so I'll look through the other quote.
Speaker one words, also the top, the top two items equal forty thousand, not thirty, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, that was added, sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah, the gazebo was added, right?
Yeah.
I'll refresh.
What type of flooring is, not flooring? The playground stairs, is that timber, concrete?
Yes, it's like.
Stone.
Yeah, it's like, it's, there's the retaining there. Steps that lead up to it, fresh.
Yes.
They're, they're, yeah, they're like landscaping steps.
So they're not, they're not gonna resurface it, they're just gonna chop it up and rebuild it, I guess.
I think so, that's what I understand.
George, from my understanding with Roger, I can get the more specific, it's, it's specific. The stone that you replace, that has tread, you know, built into it, if you look at the, the steps, they're very smooth. And so there's a particular.
Oh, a stone process.
Oh.
So, so that's.
Yeah.
So, yes, yeah. Yeah.
I would care that. So, yeah, so the other call up for you, Colin, here is normally all this kind of stuff would be in our, in our budget. We'd like walk all over whether or not we want to include it in the budget during budget time. And then the budget and spend would start July first. So if we got this into the budget and got it approved in next March, these projects wouldn't start until July first, twenty sixth. That's normally how we go about getting any of these things fixed, is we put it in front of everyone, let all the community members go over line by line. And let them evaluate and decide if we should do this stuff.
Yeah, okay.
I think the epoxy flooring's a new thing, but we considered the speakers and projectors last budget season and didn't include them. Instead, included other things, do you consider the playground stairs last budget season? No, it's a new item as well.
It's not discussed, it wasn't.
If, oh, it's not on the long term plan, it really isn't safe for your kids, especially in the winter, it really, that's, we looked at it, all three of us, we went out. For a little jaunt and looked at, and the bathrooms too, we really, if at all possible.
We looked at the bathrooms?
What, yeah, and then, and then the ones would be good, and then. Also, the projector's been, has, it's been on, on the list for a while, so we'll see, this is. Also, the projector's been on, has, and it's been on, on the list for a while. So we'll see. This is really just right, just to think about.
The projector is mostly used by the town though, for town, uh, town meeting, right? Or is it used by the school often?
We, we use it. We use it. Um, I, I know there's been a concern from the town about this. So.
Is it like once, use it once a month, once?
Uh, yeah.
No.
That's the kind of thing that I would like to bring up with the town. I, is it working for the?
Yeah.
To see if the town budget could pay for it. Doesn't matter more for the town. It also could buy about the speaker.
Yeah, the speaker thing came from the, from the town meeting because people were in the back and.
Yeah.
Struggling to hear. And so that's why I kinda asked Brian initiative, uh, research and.
Yeah.
How do we, I didn't know, I, I didn't recommend replacement, but I mean, wrong good money after bad. May not be worth it either, but uh, anyway, that's the genesis of.
Yeah, we'll get some more quotes.
Yeah.
Look at the quotes, like twelve, twelve grand or so worth of labor, put it all in place.
I'm looking for, for schools' functions. Um, I mean, we use the sound every day for the uh, for the lunches. We have the microphone. It's fine for that. Um, occasionally, uh. It's, it's pretty good. I, I mean, for, for what we use it for, but you know, we, kids are quiet when we're usually. Usually, uh, when we're doing a show, uh, or an assembly. Um, it's uh, the acoustics in there aren't great, not just because of the speakers. I mean, there's multiple things at play there. Uh, there's that fan, you can hear the fan always that grounds out some sound. Uh, there's an echo, um, steel and.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts to.
But the speakers are part of it, but not the only things.
You have to speak up loud enough there.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. No, I guess my, my question was, is like, we know, that was brought up to the last meeting by the people was that that was a concern, but. Obviously, it seems sort of in school function, it's. Some. It's ever been raised to me as a concern around what we use it for. Um, but I, you know.
I have a hard time committing to that. So during, during budget season, uh, I'm going to be talking to the town budget committee. It's part of, one of the committees I volunteered for. So I could just bring up and say, hey, if the town wants paper, that's fine.
Fifty two years on maybe, yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's coming from the same tax base. So what budget it goes on.
Semantics, a little bit.
Yeah.
Taxation semantics.
A little bit, you know, I want the, the voters to be able to have a, a voice in it, cause. You know, it was their request.
Yeah.
So what I'll do for the next, before the next board meeting is I'll.
Yeah.
I'll share the link. I won't make these PDFs and then you can, you'll see what we have as we load in more quotes and whatnot. So.
Good.
It'll be, it's a live document, but you'll be able to see as we add things. So it has all three districts, but it's fine.
And um, how much should we return to the taxpayers uh, in this fiscal year? Or to previous fiscal year?
Uh. Question. We returned. Almost exactly what we were, what we had said we were in our time.
Which is either, I think it was either eighty or ninety thousand, right? I think we swallowed much this year.
Yeah.
My. My concern about this year versus last year, etc., is um. That the contingent, contingency fund was something different, weird, unusual than normal. And had a law-based promise to return it back to the public. And so anybody who looked at the budget and voted for that contingency and saw we didn't use it. Might expect that to be additive, that we're gonna return what we'd usually return. If there's overage and return the contingency fund, which would mean giving a hundred and twenty back to voters. Right? That would still leave us some money to fix bathroom floors and stairs and such, but. It would keep someone from coming back up and really holding us to the fire for that contingency fund not being used for contingencies. You know? Right. So it really depends if, if we promised to return an extra thirty thousand or not because the contingent funds play it. Promised, or if we return similar to the previous years.
We return one oh eight, six oh eight.
So, we're what we promised. We're putting on. What, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a safety issue. We have, we just do it and we find money for it. And this is a convenient place. We, we could say. Let's move from the contingency fund to, to replace the stairs.
Stairs.
Stairs are, yeah, definitely a safety issue. Right, but we would have a public uh. Uh, hearing and we decide, okay, in this public hearing. It's been decided it's a safety issue. We're gonna use this money to replace the stairs. And then it all makes sense and, and nobody's really upset with us for making that decision. Right, we're keeping the children safe. But we give them a chance to come to a public hearing.
And if you want to return based on that rationale, thirty plus ninety, okay?
Right, but I mean, if it's a safety issue, let's consider it, use it.
Right, it's almost like a contingency use anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm with you. Yeah, public hearings are good. Cool beans?
We're good.
We don't, but there's no, no vote required today, right? Cause we know at the end of the.
Yeah, we wait till next month till we have a um, even more clearer picture. Of the.
Review, I'm in the trash.
Yeah.
Next up, item number twelve is uh, our board correspondence. Mr. Barry, do we have anything?
No, we didn't receive any correspondence from the board, so it's a placeholder, in case I do.
Next up, general uh, program assurances.
Yeah, so typically in May, we would ask, you know, the board chair to sign that. I mean, we give authorized the signature of the general program assurances. And, but because of uh. Some guidance and maybe the political climate, uh, the New Hampshire School Board. Association of the Council of School Attorneys has recommended us to laying signing till uh. After May nineteenth. Um, and what we're hoping to do is, you know. Get a, a bit of a meeting prior to uh, June first, likely maybe at the SAU meeting. To, to uh, authorize the signing of general assurances. Um, and general services. Basically means you're complying with federal regulations, which makes you eligible for funding. And uh, we kinda outlined a little bit of the funding background in board notes. Um, so we're just gonna gi- give you an update. We're not asking for anything, but uh, just to give you a heads up and uh. Um, so even we presented this uh, at their meeting last week, you guys on the fifteenth. Hopefully, at the nineteenth, we'll get more information and guidance. And uh, and we anticipate and expect to sign them, but we're just waiting for information. You know, that plays up. So just an update there for you guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Um, next up, item fourteen is our twenty four, twenty five board goal reflection.
Yes, and, and we don't have to do anything with this as well, but we're kinda setting the table up. As you guys take a look at your goals that you have as a board and they're attached in there from the twenty four, twenty five year. And um, as we move forward and, you know, depending on what the June meeting looks like, depending what the July retreat looks like. Um, we want the school board to think about their goals. And uh, for us. As, as we think about goals for school boards, it's, it's a lot of oversight. It's a lot of communication. Um. And you guys take a look at, you know, the goals and I would be looking at like, hey, did you? Did you, were you successful in these goals? And, and then as you think about where this board is at with these goals and what goals you want. Uh, we can have some more conversation about it. And just some things like, you know, what, are there things you like to keep and revise? Are there things you might wanna eliminate? Or are there some things that we might wanna add? Again, we don't have to do anything tonight, but a- as board members, I would take a look at this and, and we'll build an agenda to include this. And you guys can reflect on these goals and then um, build some goals for the twenty five, twenty six year. Um, I, I believe sometimes less is more with goals. From, from an organization and a school board, so you can work towards them. Um, and I think people have done a good job of aligning it to the framework, uh, from the, you know, all the, the SAU goals to the. Building level goals, the school board goals. So I do appreciate that. But I just want people to be thinking about that as we move forward. So nothing tonight. Over and, and uh, just, we'll go from there. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, next up, you have a personnel item?
Yes, so uh, we have a resignation. And then we have a, a nomination for approval. So let's take a look at um. The resignation. Uh, we, we did receive a resignation from our school counselor slash social worker, Anna Gerard. Um, it's attached in there. Uh, she has the opportunity to go into uh, the private sector. And is going to take that opportunity, but in turn, it, you know, what it does is creates an opening for school councilor and social worker here. Um, but I was hoping to get a, a motion to approve the resignation of Anna Gerard with regret and appreciation.
We also have to accept the nominations.
Not yet. I'm gonna do that separate.
Oh, yeah. Well, then I will motion to accept the resignation with regret.
Second by Colin, all those in favor of accepting the resignation of Anna Gerard. With regret passes five, nothing.
All right, thank you very much. And so um. Also attached in, in the agenda is you see a nomination for a school counselor and a social worker. Uh, the resume is attached in there as well, uh, for your eyes. Um, and we're very, uh, you know. Very excited, I would say. I think Tom, you're excited. Your people are excited. Uh, I met Stephanie Horn yesterday. Um, you know, had a, a very nice conversation for about forty minutes in my office. I spoke with her current superintendent this morning. Um, and she is looking to, to make a move. A, a, a bit of a, kind of into a different type of role. Um, and uh, responsibility, uh, a match for her was, was uh. Vernon Elementary School. Went through the process with Tom and uh, they, they, you know, brought her name to us. I met her. Um, I really think she's going to be a nice addition to the staff at NV. And I think it's going to allow us to continue the work that's already happening. And uh, and I was just, you know, I was just. Observed her, her energy level, commitment to education. Willingness to have candid conversations. And uh, so I was hoping to get a nomination or approval of the nomination of Stephanie Horn. As a school counselor and social worker at, at Vernon Elementary.
Motion by Colin, second by George. All those in favor of accepting the nomination of Stephanie Horn. Passes five, nothing. So she's gonna conclude this school year. And then she's gonna, well, went to actually.
Yeah, so I just wanna say thank you to Anna. Uh, she has been uh, an excellent addition to our school over the last four years. She actually started the same year I did, same summer I did. Um, she had just started like a month before I, before I got here, but. Um, she uh, very dedicated, um, and uh, well, well-respected all around. Um, she does not wanna leave. She doesn't. She's very conflicted about this, but uh, she knows this is a really good opportunity professionally. But I wanna thank Anna for her work, um, and uh, and her time here.
The resume of Stephanie was pretty impressive too. And what I read through was like, it's very impressive.
Figure, uh, experience. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in a day and age where, where a counselor is a, is a key person in a school. Um, you know, coming out of COVID, I think we all know that those anxiety levels of, of kiddos. Um, the, the five oh fours that, that they oversee, you know, just soup to nuts, that, that, there's a responsibility. She's also our homeless, she is on our social worker and she does the classroom guidance towards Laura Hatt. Um, she is gonna be a, a. Huge asset to our school. So I'm really excited for you to meet her, really excited to work with her, team that interviewed her. Um, can't say enough about uh, just all around. She brings, brings a lot to the table. So, really, really excited, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Uh, next up is our committee updates. Not sure if we have any, I don't know, whether you wanna speak to the policy committee at all, that we've started.
Yeah, so it's, you, you policy. I guess we're going to the. The SAU board.
Yeah, just a, a quick update. And this is my first year on the, on the committee, but. Collectively, the SAU and, and we are behind in our updating of, of policies. Some haven't been touched or looked at and updated in twenty plus years. So we're gonna ask. Kinda try to fast track and get ourselves in a better position with uh. You know, not necessarily going in and changing the policies that they don't need to be, but certainly. Making reference to the fact that we looked at them and, and updated as needed. But um. And uh, initiative from Michael to get our policy. Updated in a better spot, uh, from a timeline perspective. So um, you'll be seeing. More approvals and, and breakdown of, of updated policies from the state or SAs, whatever. Uh, more so than we've had in the past to get us back on track.
Yeah, no, and we're gonna use, utilize Simbly. It's a, it's a great platform. Once we get used to it and uh. It'll allow us to be a little more efficient. Uh, Chelsea Gordon, the executive assistant, is uh, critical in this work. And so. I appreciate the volunteers. I know it's a tough time and uh, but it's important work for the boards. So thank you. Um, I am looking for, uh, Leaf, I'm kinda looking at you, but I know you kinda have a lot of responsibility lately. But you were on the long-term planning, that, that, that small group that met periodically. At the last SU meeting, we asked each board to select one person to join um, that group, you know, be with me. Uh, and Christie Peters is the at-large person as the chair of the SC thirty nine. But we're gonna be working on some uh, visioning, you know, and creating a visioning statement to go from mission. Statement to the framework and connecting that a bit more um, logically. And so uh, we're just looking for a member. It's not a huge lift. So if it's not leaf, it doesn't have to be a huge leap. But uh, if you were there, you're gonna continue on it. It's up to you.
Yeah, I'll appear. I think it's turning the day, right?
Well, typically. So, in Zoom, I should, let's say Zoom.
Even so, it's been rough recently, but uh, get away during the day.
I'm with you. So, yeah, so, yep, that works. I appreciate that. I'll tell Chelsea. Thanks, Leaf. And that's, that's really all we have. Unless there's updates from any other committees.
Uh, next up, other business. Does anybody have any items?
No, no other business for tonight. Should we tend an update? Uh, we kind of, we spoke to it a little bit earlier about some of the budget pieces, so. Uh, we do appreciate that, right? We're good to go on that.
Yeah, that was just back to the presentation. If you're, Amy went through it again, double check it.
And then um, the only update I have, I'm, I'm excited and we probably should have told you maybe a month ago, but it was just starting and we didn't. We didn't kinda get into it, but Tom, you, you were part of this process where uh, a new league has been formed through some schools allowing us to have. Um, fifth and sixth grade participate um, in a, kinda like the second or third. You know, baseball, softball teams that AMS and fifth and sixth graders from Mount Vernon were able to participate with that. And uh, right, and they took, and three students took the opportunity to participate in that. So we like that. And I thought the board would wanna be aware of that.
That's really.
Yeah, that's right. So it's, it's great. Um, and then the, the uh, last piece is uh. You know, I just wanna commend all the work that happens at, at, at NV. Um, it's, it's definitely a. A great place to partner with from the SAU's perspective and uh, that goes with the board as well. You know, as we get into May, we'll figure out our June meeting, what that agenda looks like, why, why we have everyone here. I just appreciate the work, partnership, um, and the support that the school board gives uh, NV Elementary School and the SAU. So, thank you very much. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr..
Welcome, welcome. Next up, public input, two of two. Do we have any comments or questions for our live in person? And do we have a hand up for any of our?
We don't have anybody, no one's virtually attending at the moment, sir.
And any need for non-public tonight, Michael? You know, sir, no? So at seven oh one, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will make said, adjourn the meeting.
I'll say it. Second, all those in favor? Thank you, thank you folks for coming. Appreciate it, and thank you.